City Council, August 2nd, 2021, to order. Up first, we have invocation by Pastor David Butler.
Would you bow your heads with me, please? Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. For each mind and heart that feels the presence of this room, we thank you. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have ideas, we have visions, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in every perfect detail the end of every beginning. Every project, every season, every life, nothing is ever in vain. For even mistakes and missteps are used for our good. Your righteousness transcends all our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for our pride, the pride that puffs us up and the pride that threatens to unqualify us. Strengthen our confidence in you, you have made us to be. Bless this meeting this evening, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will affect afterward. Ready to make every moment count in Jesus Christ, our Lord's name. Amen.
First up tonight, we have a special occasion. It's an honor to invite our new city council member, Jim Bagby, and Judge Manny to administer the oath. Gentlemen, take it away. As you get signing you up for this job, up first will be the agenda approval. Do I have a mo— or is there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to make? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion of second. On favor. Mr. Bagby? There you go. Technology is a wonderful thing. Eyes have it, so moved. All right. Up next, approval of the minutes of July 19th, 2021, regular city council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Seeing none. Eyes have it. Unanimous, so moved. Item 1B, approval of minutes of June 7th, 2021, regular city council meeting.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I have a motion of second. Any comments? Seeing none. Vote unanimous, so moved. All right. We've already taken care of the special presentation with our inclusion of our new council meeting, or member who's really not new. He's vastly experienced as up here at the dais, and welcome aboard, sir. All right. So, we'll step right into our public comments on agenda items that are not public hearings and any matters not on the agenda. I want to let everyone know that I'll hold you to three minutes. At about two minutes and forty-five seconds, I'll ask for you politely to wrap up your thoughts, and we'll proceed at that point. When you come up to the microphone, just state your name and your address for the public record. And I also want to remind you that at the very end of the meeting, there'll be another opportunity for public comment. So you get two opportunities to come up to the podium. So, I'm always trying to switch it up, but I'm not tonight. We're gonna start over here to my left. Anyone that wants to come up and make comment at the podium, don't come all up at once, just one at a time. Anyone want to come on up? Spectacular. All right. So now we will move to the middle. Is—it—come on up, sir. The button's off, so hit the button there.
Bill McKissick, 151 Calhoun Avenue. My question is, we've spoken before in regards to doing a new video for pontoon rentals on an educational video, which I volunteered my service to help create, and I was wondering if there's any new update or any status on how that is proceeding. I know the Sheriff's Department was considering doing something with it, but the reports of accidents and what I've seen just continues to grow and grow. There's definitely a real huge need for some education in this field.
Webb, would you like to weigh in?
Yes, there has been a video published by the Water Sports Corp Coalition. We also have that available on our Facebook page as well as website. And it is the safety video that was done in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department, the TDD, as well as the Oakloose County. So it is available and produced out there.
Also, they are going to—they are going to make some recommended changes to the video, but I do know that at least John's, because I've already walked by his booth, and they're showing it to their people already, even though they're gonna make some improvements. So that video has been produced, and I don't think it's the last one they're going to do. They're also gonna do one with local conditions and stuff like that.
Yeah, there will be two more videos, is my understanding.
Well, that's my concern, that it has to have local conditions on how to navigate with the currents that we have here that are so difficult. And is it a—will it be a mandate that—to rent a pontoon boat, that you will have to watch disapproved video before you'll be able to rent a pontoon boat? Or is this a voluntary—voluntary kind of scenario right now?
I don't think we've addressed that legislatively at this point. I do know that FWC requires a safety video to be presented. Isn't it—am I correct there, Webb?
My understanding, and—I'm sorry, Coach's not here, but that FWC does require that beforehand.
Well, that's something, when they finally get their final video. I think the industry's really made a conscientious effort to make a difference with the education and training. I think they've heard our—our concerns loud and clear, and those of folks like you. We are the second-leading area for boating accidents, so everybody's got that on their radar. So there may be some legislative action down the line as we address the liver vessel moratorium after we get our harbor capacity study done.
Well, that's what I was thinking. We spend a lot of effort and a lot of energy and a lot of money on capacity, but capacity is just one piece of the puzzle. The education and knowing how to operate a boat or jet ski is just as important as the number of boats that we have. And I really feel like that there's not that education. I know if I have a 24-year-old son that wants to use my boat, he has to have a boater's license. But yet, he could go down to the harbor and rent a boat at 24 years old, and they go, "Watch that five-minute video, here's your keys, go have a great time." Something about that just doesn't jive. If you want to rent a car, which is a whole lot easier to drive than a boat, you have to have a driver's license. But you can go rent a boat and just be complete novice and go out there and deal with this. I mean, I'm in the boat business, everybody knows that. And every Mon—every Monday, all ideas hear stories all day long about people that don't know how to operate a boat crashing. I mean, last weekend, my next-door neighbor jet ski ran under the dock, girl got all cut up. It was hurry up, get out of here before the police come, we don't want a report. And they scooted out before the police come. Another boat I just delivered on Friday, I won't say the name or the size of the boat, but very expensive boat, pontoon boat ran into him Saturday. $10,000 of damage to his brand-new boat. I mean, it's—it's—it's just getting to the point where it's really serious, and I hear it every day. So some kind—I don't know if it's city, county, or state, but the regulations to rent a pontoon boat are completely woefully inactive.
You hear the stories? I see them every day. I'm on the water, so I—I know what you're saying is true.
Yeah.
And—and it's just something—it's a—it's a progressive—we've—we've tried to really encourage the industry to up their game, and I feel like they've made a conscientious effort. It benefits them to protect their equipment as well. So I think we'll see a lot more movement towards making it a better situation for everybody.
But I'd like to be part of that video, if I could see the video or put my input into it. I'd be—I'd be willing to volunteer.
Yeah. You can see it online right now, right, Webb?
That is correct.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Up next.
Webb, is there a way you can put him in touch with—is it John at Luther's that's handling that or being—
I'll be happy to get his information, and we can put everybody in touch with each other. Thank you.
That'd be great.
All right. Come on up.
Jimmy Perkins, 748 Benning. I came here tonight to fire up some people, but when I got here, passed out my papers, met with the city attorney, she assured me that it's gonna be taken care of, the problems that I've been having, it's gonna be taken care of. So I just want to thank you guys for bringing it to light at the last of July 6th, and for the city attorney getting on it, and I appreciate it. See you guys later.
All these people are getting ready to fire you guys up.
I saw the T-shirts.
It's not one T-shirt, it's the whole city.
Well, I—I—I've been an advocate for the fishing industry for a long time, and when—we used to do the T-shirt thing too, so I saw it coming. But I—I'm glad that—that we've had some resolution to your issues. And, you know, the best way to always deal with this is—is just come and make your—make your issues known. I mean, that's what—you know, unfortunately for us, we can take individual comments from people, you know, the public, but we can't talk about it till we get to these meetings. So coming to these meetings, when you have an issue that needs to be resolved, that's the best way.
Yeah, hopefully this gets resolved, and she assured me that it will be—
Thank you, Jimmy.
I'll have 200 people in here next week.
There you go. We'll welcome every one of them. We'll—we'll welcome every one of them. Oh, you don't want to stay to the end and speak again? Come on! Thank you, Jimmy. More importantly, thank you, Kim.
No pressure.
All righty then. Well, anyone else would like to come on up to—the podium and have us say, "If you stick around, we may do something you like or you don't like, you may want to talk about it at the very end." So everyone else is welcome to stay if they so choose. Seeing no further advancement to the podium, I'm gonna go ahead—if we can get the microphone shut off—I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting, and turn this over to our city manager. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4A is regarding the Florida State statute regarding building—the Building Codes Act. And we have Ms. Strickland here, who is trying to get the city aligned with that current statute, and she has a brief presentation to bring you up to speed on where we need to go.
Yep. Thank you, Lance. Good evening, mayor and council members. I don't have a presentation. I listed all of the backup documentation in your agenda packet for this item. So basically, Florida statute, chapter 553 dot 70 outlines the need for special accounting for building permit revenues. And essentially, the annual revenues derived must not exceed the total estimated costs of the allowable activities, which are activities used to enforce Florida building code. And so, what I'm proposing here is that we pull out the building permit fees and likewise, out of the general fund, and put it into its own special fund. Likewise, we're gonna take out all of the expended expenses related to enforcing Florida building code. So you'll have in your packet the internal budget amendment, and then I'll be reporting on this separately in our audited financial reports on an annual basis. By pulling out the expenses and putting them into their own fund with their revenues, you'll note that our revenues are about $500,000 a year short of covering the expenses. So after some time period with this, we'll have enough backup to work with a rate specialist to hopefully simplify our current building permit revenues, which I think will increase the—the number of contractors that are playing by our rules and pulling the proper permits. So with that, I'm just open to any questions you might have.
Ms. Haver.
I was just gonna make the recommended motion if there's no discussion.
Well, we can make a motion and get a second, and we can have discussion. Go ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution 21-10 to establish a building fund as a special revenue fund effective immediately, and approve the internal budget transfer included as Exhibit A to Resolution 21-10.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's pretty clear the intent of this legislative act was to make sure that building permits didn't turn into a revenue tool. So what is their intent when we actually are going in the hole as we are? They don't mandate that we up the—the fees? I think we're—we're on the opposite end of that spectrum of what this legislation is supposed to be addressing. So there is no mandate in the state law that says we shall raise our fees up to match? Is any of that in the legislation? I've not read the entire bill.
No, it—it just says that the revenues are not supposed to be greater than the expenses. It doesn't say that we cannot subsidize them. There—there is—a—this is a policy decision for council members to—to decide. You need to choose as—as our governing board, if you want to continue subsidizing with taxpayers, you know, ad valorem funds or from other types of revenues that the city receives. Or if you thi—feel that maybe building permit revenue is more fairly a portion to the contractors who are doing that type of work and receiving the service of having building inspectors and building officials review their work. So that's a policy decision for our governing board to make.
It is. I just wanted us to understand this was not a mandate from the state of Florida that we shall raise our fees.
You're correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Bagby?
It's on a four-year rolling average, though, isn't it?
That's correct. The four-year average rolling rule is basically if we, over four years, we have a net profit, then we're supposed to establish a committee and have the committee choose how to—what to do with that net profit. One option would be to return those excess revenues back to the people who paid for those building permits.
I have a motion of second, and seeing no further discussion, let's go ahead and take a vote. The vote is unanimous, eyes have it, so moved.
Item 4B is the first quarter financial investment report. We have representatives from our city investment management team, from Raymond James here. We have both Brian and Steve to answer any questions or address the council.
Yeah, Brian or Steve, would one of you like to come up and—to speak at all on the investments? Shaking your head, no. So i—in your packet, you'll have the—in the agenda item I summarized on the fiscal year, all of our—the net changes. You'll notice that I put some additional money into our investment account this past December, when all of the ad valorem monies were rolling in. We are still allocating them in accordance with resolutions that were passed back in 2012 with the city. And now Brian and Steve are here to answer any other questions you might have.
Want to give us—
We can answer trivia questions as well. We're really good at world geography.
Would you mind giving us—I know it's a hard word to say, forecast, but in the anticipation of where—you know, you gave us a really good presentation on the changes you made to your investment, to investing these funds for the city. In light of what is on the precipice of that could happen, how do y'all feel about where we're at in our position?
We'd be a lot more comfortable talking about what we did before. We did—we did have a strategic move that wasn't very sexy, where we really kind of came down hard on the council and said, "We suggest that you take a large block of funds and stick it in CDs," which is not normally what happens with a financial advisory team. But that was the—kind of the—kind of a gap in the—in the yield curve, and the banks with the CDs were the—were the last ones normally to—to jump on that, you know, changing of the interest rate scenario when they were dropping so quickly, and we locked in a bunch of money at a really nice rate for a while, and it was great. Actually, it was the number-one performing ice class for the city. Of course, all those have matured, or almost all matured, and they are renewing at nothing. So what was a really good strategy—and it worked—is we've been moving those funds slowly back into the investment strategy that we came from. Going forward, as you'll know, I mean, everybody's talking about inflation, 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 and the tenure hit one point—less than 1.2 today, so there's this dichotomy, and it is extremely volatile. We've been researching all after— We've been researching all afternoon to find out, most of our analysts think that the 10-year treasury, the Raymond James Senior Analyst thinks that the 10-year treasury will be at 2% by the end of the year. That's a big move from here. Your Eagle Asset Management, Senior Portfolio Manager thinks interest rates will be higher than they are now by the end of the year. I don't think that's a very bold move to make, you know, I mean, they're so low, they kind of sort of have to. But I'll let Steve jump in here, but I think that the volatility inevitably remains, which can be an opportunity if the PM is really good at managing to that spread, but the spread on the credits are so thin right now, there's no, there's no nugget there. So I think we're just going through a period where we're going to have to see whether we have inflation or stagflation, or both theoretically. I'm not sure. Steve? He's the smart guy. He knows the answer.
I hate for you to bother.
I know, it's a tough question, but we get it every day, you know?
No, we'd rather answer your questions, of course, if you have them as well. But, you know, we worry about with your particular accounts, you know, two things happen. One is that there's an economic downturn, a bad economy. That impacts your portfolio. Or two is the interest rate environment. You're in very, very safe, short-term, conservative investments, so we're watching an economic downturn and/or interest rates. We love to see in a short-term, high-quality portfolio that when the economy turns bad, your investments perform very well. And sure enough, last year, I'm looking here, you were up 3.7%. It was our second-best year across the board. And then we don't look so good when the economy's roaring, but in my opinion, that's appropriate. You know, that's when revenues are good, that's when business is good. So it's doing what we're designed to do in that regard. The interest rate environment's the other thing that affects your return. Unfortunately, when interest rates come down close to zero, as they have again on hold in the last year, you're locking in a lower return in bonds going forward, and we'll struggle with those returns as the interest rate environment stays low. And eventually, it'll go back higher like it did seven years ago when we came on board and then things are good. But those are the, we're happy to see that it performed well when the economy did seize up a bit, and with rates low, I wouldn't guess you'll see a home run next year because rates are low.
I would add that the, if interest rates start to quickly rise, as everybody keeps saying it's going to for the last eight years, those three, emergency funds, debt relief fund, are all in extreme short term, so that's actually the place you want to be if interest rates rise quickly, because they're going to get and take advantage of that rise. The alternative investment has done well when interest rates are flat or going down, and that might hurt the alternative investment if interest rates rise quickly because it's a little longer. So you got, you got a little diversification there. But like, I think I'd just say as a soldier, you know, sometimes you just got to hunker down in the foxhole and wait till the mortar barrage subsides, you know?
Kind of like what I'm doing with my cryptocurrency at the moment.
We're not getting into cryptocurrency here, are we?
Please don't. Dr. Ramswell, I know you have a question for him.
Well, I think most of it was answered, but I was going to look back at Crystal. I remember back, I think it was around 2016, and before you were here, but we had made some changes, I believe around that time, that appeared to have been very beneficial. Y'all recommending any changes at this point, or don't look a gift horse, keep on, you know, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I would say that goes back to what Brian said. The move at the time was that interest rates had risen quite a bit, and we're at their basically high point of the last decade, and our recommendation was, well, I mean, it was after a long conversation with the council, was to take advantage of those rates by locking them in with some CDs. FDIC insured CDs can't go down, the rates locked in. If the interest rates come down especially, that's going to look really good. It did. The problem now is we're in the opposite environment, so we can't make that move right now.
Great, thank y'all.
Haver.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, as far as the portfolio itself, how many, how big of a spread do we have, like, some, Roth, I mean, where are we broken out into? You're saying we have some CDs, we have some bonds. What exactly is our portfolio spread as far as, do we have, like, pieces?
You have four major, well, you have, you have four major accounts. The two emergency accounts that are designed for six-month period liquidity. You have the debt service account, which is designed for a one-year. That's all three managed in the exact same, extremely conservative, extremely short-term bond, all really, really super safe. And then you have the alternative investment, which is the fourth piece, and that's kind of a longer-term fund that's invested in a strategic, or a high-quality income, all bond, but just a little longer, basically, on the maturity. And then the piece that we took from CDs came, the CD, you know, tranche that was big at one point and is now smaller, came from a little bit of all those, really, and we've put it kind of back into those equally as we've, as they matured and they were renewing for 0. something. And that's, that's the way it's broke out right now. Okay, I didn't know that answer.
Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to commend you all on the job you've done, 3.7 in this environment, it's pretty good, very good. And I want-
It's last year. Last year.
It's all-
We're flat, we're flat this year, I mean.
But I guess you all understand that all of us are investing with public money here.
Yeah.
And should it ever be a question of, you feel pressured to make more, safety is what at least one council person up here, and I believe all of us, are really caring about.
We've been here in this situation before when we've been challenged to do something not just a little bit more than this, but actually potentially even more aggressive, and we literally have stood before the council and said it will not be on our watch. We have a fiduciary responsibility as well, and we're very proud of our reputation, and this town means a lot to all of us.
Not on our watch either.
Yes, sir.
Guys have done a great job, and I remember that speech when you gave that. So next, when will we get another update briefing from y'all?
Whenever you want one. We do a quarterly report that gets sent out to you, like the one you have now.
Okay.
And we regularly meet with the city on a probably semi-annual basis at a minimum, and then verbally more than that. And we just are always available. So we always just kind of, you know, we get together and say, you know, we haven't been here a little while, let's see if the city council wants to meet with us. Sometimes you guys have really strict loads, and it's just, it's like, it doesn't fit in here, so we look for a window when it's a little bit less, and we try to come in. But we can come in anytime you want us to. I mean, it's literally about a seven iron from here is our office.
All right. Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
At least you were coming up with happy news.
Right.
Six months from now might be a different story. We shall see. Alrighty then, Lance, take it away.
Thanks, Chair. Item 4C is regarding the post certificate of occupancy building inspections. Back on July the 6th, council had asked staff to bring back some ideas regarding this, and Mr. Zenguzi and his staff are available now to bring those forward.
Dr. Ramswell, you up for this? Go ahead.
Yeah, but I mean, let's let Mr. Zenguzi give us his brief if he's got one.
Yeah, I'll give you a quick brief. It's no while, the building official. Good evening, council. So based on a little research, there was some language back in 2008 in statutes that did require condominiums, four stories or more, have an inspection performed by, and a report provided to them under seal of a licensed, basically professional in the field, either architect or structural engineer. And then in 2010, that Florida statute language was repealed. So basically now, staff felt that, you know, in light of the Miami-Dade area building collapse and council's direction to look into it, you know, we're all about life safety here as well and protecting those. So we had put together some proposals for you this evening. Obviously, it's council's decision on the route they wish to take tonight, and so we've just presented this information to you in the staff report.
Thank you so much for bringing this forward and the research that y'all have put into it. I also have been doing quite a bit of research on this topic, and I like the prepared motion or direction that y'all give us in number one, but I did have a few items that I wanted to bring up and see about including, and then maybe make a new motion if the council isn't support. One of the items I noticed here was that we have on all condominium buildings, and I would like to see that we actually change that to what the Florida statutes identify as the Florida threshold buildings, so that we could, instead of just focus on condominiums, any office buildings or any buildings, any structure that would meet that threshold, which is three stories, 50 feet. So that's one element. I also note that you said, because you're basing this on condominiums, speaking to the respective condo association as being the responsible party, and that might be relevant in the case of a condominium, but in other buildings, perhaps we need to add the word owner, so that it would be the owner of the building or the homeowner's associate, whatever would be applicable in that case. I also wondered, down at the bottom, you've got under the seal of an architect or an engineer. And one of the other things that turned up during my research was the fact that they have been looking at actually having what they call certified special inspectors through the Florida statutes. These are the specific inspectors/structural engineers that are qualified, you know, to look at threshold buildings. So I would request that we actually change that from just architect or engineer to a certified special inspector as defined by the Florida statutes.
Dr. Ramswell, could you just articulate that in a motion?
Absolutely. I have it written down, but I wanted to explain it so people would know what I was saying and why I was saying it in a motion.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, so if you'd like to articulate that motion, we'll give a second, then if anybody
has any further comments, we are, because I think you've kind of captured, cap, captulated everything in it.
That's, that's fine with me. It's kind of a lengthy one, but-
Sure, go ahead.
It actually utilizes a lot of the language that was provided already, but I added in some other elements. Direct staff to draft an ordinance requiring inspections be performed every 10 years on any structure identified as a threshold building as defined in Florida Statutes 553.71, Section 12, at the expense of the owner or homeowners association, whichever may be applicable. The inspection is required to be performed by a Florida certified special inspector as defined by Florida Statutes 553.71, Section 9, and include inspection of the building's foundation and subsurfaces. The report must be written under seal of the special inspector and attest to the required maintenance, structural integrity, useful life, and replacement costs of the common elements. A copy of the inspection report must be provided to the City of Destin within 90 days of the end of the 10-year period, with any necessary repairs required to be completed with 100, within 180 days after the inspection.
I'll second that motion.
Thanks. Do y'all have any questions? Because there were a couple things I added in there based on other language, some of the Miami-Dade stuff, some that I found in other states.
The only thing I saw missing in that, Dr. Ramswell, would be a proactive date when we would, for the art, in the ordinance, when, when, when this would-
When we would want to do it.
When would this become?
I would say now, and the reason I say now, and I know one of the options on here was wait until 2022, but I'd rather be proactive and pave the way, and if we need to make changes subsequent to what the legislature does, we can do so.
Like, one October 2021, get the ordinance?
Well, soon as the ordinance is passed.
Well, we'd have to go through the council vote, so however soon that they could be returned to us.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, sir. Definitely, Dr. Ramswell, support this. Only thing I would, I was thinking of is the starting point for the buildings that are already a certain age, to make sure we either reflect it in the language of the ordinance or the motion to start them immediately, or year one, or whatever that-
Yeah, buildings that exceed the 10-year age, or whatever.
Whatever that timeframe is, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'd like to turn directly to Kim on this, because you'll be helped writing the ordinance. What would be that, your recommendation on, because we have a lot of buildings, high-rises that are 30 years old already?
Well, Councilmember Schmidt did mention this to us at our meeting earlier today, that if this was the route council went, he would recommend that buildings that are 10 years old as of now be required to do so, you know, I would say probably we should give them at least a year to get that started and provide that to us, and then going forward, it would be, you know, every 10 years.
Yeah, and I do want to, we'll get some public comment during the ordinance process from people that own these buildings. This is not going to be cheap for them. This is, I'm sure it's going to be in the tens of thousands of dollars, if not more. I don't know. I haven't seen that. So just, we got to kind of keep that in mind, and I'm sure when we go through the first reading and the second reading, we'll get plenty of emails and comments from people that build those buildings, things that we're not really, we don't have the information to think about. But, but I like the ordinance as it's been offered in your comments as well, Kim. I trust our staff and our community development department will come up with a pretty good ordinance to do it. I've got Mr. Bagby, and then first up, though, Mr. Destin, go ahead.
Can I ask a quick question, though? Do we want to add Kevin on as an amendment, or do we want to allow Councilman Schmidt to make a new motion that pertains to that part?
I think you could just ask for an amendment.
Preble, if you want to just amend your motion, that might be easier.
Yeah, I'm happy to amend it. The buildings that already surpassed the 10-year mark be allowed one year to complete their inspection.
Is that okay with a second?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Then, Mr. Destin, you're next, and then Mr. Bagby.
Thank you. Miss Coppel, were you able to touch base with any of the people in South Florida, understand what was actually in place when this tragedy occurred?
No, we didn't yet, no.
Okay, well, it'd be interesting.
We did call, but it's just, they're probably getting a lot of calls.
I bet they are. That information is pertinent, because while this is all very good, and I'll support it, if they simply just don't do it, you and I discussed, so then what happens? Code enforcement? I mean, it might be worth $500 a day for some of them just not to do it. The only alternative then is for us to do it and hire someone, which is expensive. So, you know, I'm more than willing to try it this way first, but at some later date, we may have to modify. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and Mr. Destin, I think that's going to have to be included in the ordinance. There has to be a, the-
Significant law. An enforcement mechanism?
The enforcement mechanism of the ordinance, otherwise it's just another ordinance. I mean, it's not enforceable, there'd be no motivation for them to abide by it, so that's got to be part of it, too. Which, that may draw more public comment, but it needs to be in there, and I trust that you guys could add that. Mr. Bagby?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll vote for it tonight, but I will tell you, it's got a high bar for me to vote for it to be enacted. I don't, I understand everybody's emotions, and I understand that that tragedy was in fact a tragedy, but the signs were there, from everything I've read, for a long time. And at some point, people have to be responsible for what they're responsible for. The owners of that condominium, the board of that condominium, the manager of that condominium, they all failed. It wasn't the city, and it wasn't the county, and, you know, the state, I think, probably didn't help itself when it diverted funds a few years ago. But I just don't see this as the city's role, to be honest with you. I think it provides some exposure for us. I think we're going to get preempted, because I know there are people working tirelessly right now to try to figure out what they're going, you know, all the legislation they're going to pass on this issue and the types of inspections. To me, it's, we're going to have the staff expend an enormous amount of time and energy, and that, you know, kind of concerns me, on something that in four months, five months, the legislature's going to say, no, you know, they preempt us all the time, all the time, and they will preempt us on this. As a guy who manages a condo building, a 21-story condo building, like I said from that podium, we do seven, eight inspections every year. We just finished our wall, our envelope inspection, you know, roof inspections, elevator inspections, all these inspections, pool inspections. That is the responsibility of those owners. That is a condominium. They all own that whole building. And so I, I'll vote yes tonight for staff to do it, but it's going to be a real high bar for me to vote to support an ordinance of this type. Thank you.
I think, is that, you can answer it, Kim, or Louis, is that part of the reason option number three was to wait until 2022 because of what, exactly what Mr. Bagby's speaking of about- of about Florida legislative preemption?
Yeah, exactly. We believe that the insurance companies are involved with lobbying efforts, and they are strong lobbying efforts, as I understand it. And so that's one of the options for you to consider, is, is it worth taking on now, or do we wait a few months to see what the legislature does? Because there is a chance that this could be addressed, given the political repercussions of what happened in South Florida.
Dr. Ramswell?
Thanks. So a couple of things. I believe this was in the Broward County plan that they had in terms of threshold inspections, and they do account for penalties and how they accumulate. And they listed as being essentially a civil violation notice and unsafe structure units tickets are issued. So there is a section on how to account for penalties and such. And, you know, as, as far as, as waiting, you know, there's no way to say what the legislature is or is not going to do, what elements would be incorporated, what might not be incorporated. So once again, I, I think it's incumbent upon us to really look forward, be forward-thinking, and ensure the safety as much as we can. And I'd rather double down on ensuring responsibility is upheld than not do anything and wait on something and, you know, God forbid another tragedy happens. But again, being proactive is really important in my book.
Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. And I understand exactly what you're saying, Jim. But if we take the, it's their responsibility argument to logical conclusion, then we don't bother inspect when it's being built either. After all, it's their responsibility. So we need to move forward.
It's not, it's the developers.
Right. We need to look, to go forward to at least be on the road to address this issue. And I, and I hope that the legislature does preempt us and put some really good regulations in there, and then it's not our responsibility.
All right. We've had robust conversation.
I have one more, just one more quick comment. And one of the key points that I found that a lot of different inspections leave out was looking at the foundation and the subsurfaces, which are exceptionally important when you live along the coast, especially with the rising water table, shifting sands, et cetera. And on top of that, we live by military bases where there's constant blasting and shaking. So I, I think that's another reason why it's very important for us to add those elements as well.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead. We have a motion and a second, and we'll go ahead and take this to a vote for tonight. The vote is unanimous, so moved.
Item 4D is regarding the crosstown connector update. At the last meeting, council directed me to implement option number one after a long discussion amongst the council, and, and to bring back a contract amendment to amend the Atkins contract scope and the fee not to exceed the options selected. That is what is before you tonight. It was previously discussed at the last meeting, and we have our city engineer here and Mr. Zenguzi here, if there are questions regarding that.
I would like to move to accept the contract amendment number two for Atkins North American Corporation to implement the multimodal elements and right-of-way options selected by council for an additional amount not to exceed $147,000.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Time for discussion. Mr. Destin?
My question, what was the contract to do the entire original project? To anyone who knows?
I see them, was the revised budget of $1,400,000 the budget at the time that we started with, sir?
That was their fee?
No, the 1.4 million is the, the budget that we adopted this year. We, they currently have an open encumbrance of $387,000, so we're increasing that to 147,000. I'd have to look back into the history, because I'm not sure exactly what year this initial contract went out, but it definitely predates me. I, I, I need time to look that up.
The reason I ask the question is just, is this a reasonable fee? Is it 10% of the original? Is it 20, 30%? Without that figure, it's pretty hard to, to come to a conclusion whether this is a good amount or a not-so-good amount. As far as going forward with the work, I'm absolutely in favor of that.
Mayor, council, thank you this evening. I did look at their proposal based on the work that was previously awarded and what they suggested, and yes, it is reasonable.
Okay, is their, is their fee a percentage of the entire project? I was not here when this, we entered into this.
So, no. What they do is they, based on man-hours. So they take what we asked them to do, and then tell us how long it will take to do each function, and then you just get a new price. So it's not, it's not a percentage of the whole, it's just this much work.
Hundred and forty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I'll vote for it, but I want to go back, and I might have to get with you to find out exactly how this job was priced. Thanks.
Dr. Ramswell?
No, I was actually going down a similar path of wondering, we keep getting more and more costs, and it says the increased scope. Um, well, yeah.
Do that when you're remodeling your house.
Absolutely, but I, I don't know. I, I feel like the price is a little high, and based on the original plans, the original plan even had a two-lane construction in it. So it wasn't like they had to reinvent the wheel completely. So I'd be curious in seeing that time lapse, so to speak, of the cost and the funding for that element.
So, and, and I do think I can speak to that just a little bit. So one of the issues that we had is when the original design came out with the bike lanes, and, and that ended up being one of the primary things that changed the design. So we had a choice to make the interior meeting a little bigger or to bring the outside lanes in. Now, I think the, you know, the decision we made last time was to bring the outside lanes in to make it a little smaller, which you'd think could be a little cheaper. Now, in essence, though, what happened was, is it changes the stormwater design, it changes all the driveways, it changes all the ramp cuts, it change, it, it actually changes quite a bit. Now, either way, though, it was still 110,000, 147,000, so the parameters and the way that we chose did definitely have an impact on it.
So just, just to put you on the spot, then, alarm bells didn't go off when you saw the bid, just to put it bluntly.
No, sir, it did not.
All right. Mr. Schmidt?
Are there any cost-saving benefits, opportunities with the change that we made to make it a better hit in the long run?
The one thing that I do think, and I'll say this carefully, obviously, things are quite volatile right now, as we know overall with pricing, but I do think that when we go to construction, that we will realize those savings and more based on the work that we've done. So that I am fairly comfortable saying.
All righty, then. We have a motion and a second. Let's take this to a vote. Vote is unanimous, so moved. City manager?
Thanks, sir. Item 4E is the FY '22 health insurance renewal upgrade. We have Mr. David Barton here and his partner, as well as Ms. DeVito, our human resources manager, to address this topic for you, for your consideration.
This year, when we went to look at the renewal prices for our existing health insurance, the renewal rates came in quite a bit higher than we were looking at, which was about 10% higher than previous years with no increase in benefits. So we went to our brokers who we have worked with for a number of years. They are currently in their third year of, they're in their first extension of a four-year contract. So what they did is they went out to bid, and they came back with United Health, Healthcare being the best price as, and providing better benefits for our employees. They're here to answer any questions that you might have, and there was information in your packet.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the city manager to execute a contract for health insurance effective September 1, 2021, as proposed by Centria.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any comments? We have a few here. Dr. Ramswell, and then Ms. Abear, and then Mr. Destin.
Just a quick question. In terms of using United Health, is there any information on how widely accepted it is? Are we going to have issues in terms of Blue Cross Blue Shield being, you know, PPOs, if you get that plan? Are those doctors in network much more readily available than with United, that sort of a thing?
We have exact people here to answer that question. Good to see you, Dave.
My name's David Barton. I have Mike Keraway here with me. Mike is a new employee of the Centria. He, he was, six months ago, a very worthy competitor of mine. And like all good competitors, you need to hire them to make things better for your own company. So we've done that. And in answer to your question, yes, United Healthcare has an extremely good network. It's a nationwide PPO network, has in and out of network benefits. Not all doctors are going to be in every network. You don't have the same networks in Aetna with United Healthcare and Blue Cross providers. Everybody's a little bit different. But yes, it's a very widely accepted network. It is a PPO, not an HMO, which makes it that much more widely accepted. So very good network, very good plan. We were tasked with something that I would normally say, you've got to be kidding me. We needed to improve benefits for the benefit of the employees to help with attracting and retaining employees, and that's very difficult and lower your prices at the same time. But we actually had Aetna come in as well with very good pricing. So we had two companies come in, beat the plan, design, and the pricing of Blue Cross Blue Shield, but with all the little innuendos with the policies, we felt like United Healthcare was the best source.
Thank you, Mayor. I was telling the mayor as soon as she said United, I was like, our company switched to United. The state of Florida as a whole, United is 100% better than Blue Cross, Aetna, and Humana. The coverage, the doctors, the PPOs, the insurance for your, you know, drug coverage. So I'm very happy that we were able to make that shift. I think that the employees are going to be very benefited by this new plan with United. Thank you for helping make that happen.
Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. Believe it or not, we had United at the city of Destin at one time, back in the dark ages when I was still here. And we recently, or not so recently, three, four years ago, switched the school district while I was on board to United. We've been quite pleased with United when I was there. We ran into some problems about the doctors and the networks, you always do, but United was very good about trying to reach out to those doctors that were not in the network and trying to get them in. So I'm also pretty pleased with, with the company.
Quite frankly, the, the advent of getting the, the school board onto United Healthcare was a huge benefit in getting the doctors on the network. Because that's the largest group in, in Okaloosa County, and so getting them, their family members on the plan was going to be a big discomfort for the doctors that weren't accepting it, because they were going to go somewhere else.
That's it. I was able to personally reach out to United on a couple of complaints that we got about doctors on the network, and they were able to get them in. So they, they worked on it.
All righty, then. Any more questions for Dave? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'm on, I'm already on United, so it's good policy. Of course, I'm about to get off. I finally turn 65 here in about two more days. They're kicking me out. But anyways, so we have a motion, we have a second, so let's go ahead and take this to a vote. Vote is unanimous, so moved. Thank you, gentlemen. I think our, our employees are going to benefit well from that company. Take it away there, Lance.
Thanks, sir. Item 4F is update on the business performance consulting services. Mr. Warren's going to bring this forward for us.
Good evening, Mayor and council. What you have before you tonight is an agenda item as it relates to the business before, business performance consulting services. Back in May of 2021, staff did meet with a vendor for informational purposes, and at that time, they introduced what a business performance consultant does. And basically, what that is, is a, they can come into an organization and examine some of their contracts or utilities and identify what they believe could save some, through negotiation, could save that entity some money. It was requested back at our last council meeting to bring some information back about this. Back in June of 2019, council did pass a resolution which ratified our purchasing resolution. And in that resolution, anything that is above $15,000, the city manager does have to bring before city council. And also, that purchasing resolution also encourages, or it mandates competitive bidding unless prior city council approval. So with that said, we were seeking, seeking some guidance tonight, because staff wants to ensure that we have continued transparency and accountability in our purchasing and procurement process. And we would like to find out how council would like us to proceed on this item as it relates to business performance consultants.
Your documents were also provided. I do know, and most of these council does, too, that we get solicitate, solicited every single day by a tremendous amount of third-party interested businesses dealing with a variety of topics that, that affect this city. And, you know, I guess the only real way to be fair, if we want to go down that route, is it needs to go under the RFP process. We just can't have a company coming in, making a sales pitch to Webb and Lance, and then, you know, try to show, say or tell them that they can do X, Y, or Z, and then, and then bring it back to us. And I don't think we need to be soliciting ourselves. I think the RFP process kind of negates any lack of transparency, is what Webb's trying to get by. So we've already got that in place. So I know, Mr. Schmidt, you brought it up with the company.
Sure, yeah. I'll make a motion, but I'll also, just for context, nobody solicited really anybody. It's a, just network, somebody local that I know, but just to let other people know. But I definitely direct the city manager to design and release RFP for business performance services and bring back recommended vendors to the city council for approval in accordance with our procurement manual.
There we go.
Second.
We got a motion, we got a second. Any comments? And I wasn't insinuating Kevin with you, because I get calls, and, and I'm sure every other council member does, from people that are in the biz, various businesses, whether it's, you know, websites or security issues or something.
I set through, I'll just add, I set through the first call, and for anybody that hasn't heard or known, I mean, if, and y'all can expand on it if you want, or forgive me for saying it, but I mean, there's no cost to us. We only have to pay when we realize the savings. So I don't really care which company ends up doing it, but if they're able to provide a similar service, why the heck not sign on somebody? But this is, you know, for sure.
Yeah, and if this motion passes, the RFP will go out, and they can come in there, and we'll pick the best one. I got Mr. Destin, Mr. Bagby, and then Dr. Ramswell. Go ahead, Mr. Bagby.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I like where your head is on, you know, let's be the most efficient organization that we can be. We used to participate in the strolling process, which, that's built up around my, I take a little bit of exception, there is a cost, okay? There is a cost, an opportunity cost, in staff time and staff energy and bandwidth, for lack of a better word. So we have a fixed staff. We've, I've heard all of y'all talk movingly over the last couple of months about, we have to create a better environment for our staff. We have to pay them more, we have to give them better benefits, we have to do all these things. But part of that is creating an environment where we prioritize their effort, and we say, look, this is critical, you got, and, and, you know, Crystal does it very well, and I think Lance did very well when we were at the budget workshops. The critical stuff, the important stuff, and then the stuff stuff. And we need to make sure we have the staff- And we need to make sure we have the staff working on the critical stuff and the important stuff. That was part of my rationale on the discussion with the condo inspections. What do we want the staff focused on? Because you say, "Well, these folks will all bring in," well, no. Somebody's got to write that RFP, somebody's got to contact other places who have written similar RFPs, kind of take the best practices of that, and then pull all that together, then bring it back to us so we can approve it. And then they send it out, and then they have to interview all those people. I, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't make them do that, I'm just saying we need to think about, because I can come up with 100 great ideas every two weeks. I really can. Just ask my kids. But the staff can't execute my 100 great ideas. My family can't execute my 100 great ideas every two weeks. And so, I just, I want us to be efficient. I think we just saved $20,000 or so, or more on the health insurance. You know, that's the way the process, you know, the efficiency, we have a process. So, I'm not opposed to this, but I just want us to be sure that we're conscious that the staff, this is not free. It's a cost on us. Thank you.
Mr. Destin.
The only question I have is, are, do these companies specialize in government entities? I've seen this a lot in the private sector, where they come in, they audit utility bills, they audit your tax bills, and some of them save money. Do we know if these people that propose, or are there a lot of them out there that specialize in government entities? Because it's a lot different than private business. Do we know the answer to that?
We did ask for references for this particular company, and Crystal, I think the two references we got were a private sector and then also a church.
One was a church, and one was a medical office. But the entity did not have any, any state or local governments that, they didn't have any experience. But they're a young company.
That would be the point. I've not seen a whole lot of people that specialize in doing this service for government entities. The other point I would make is, I know that, I've been talking to Lance, and we discussed at council about getting construction management people on board. That's essentially what they do, and that's where a tremendous amount of savings could be found. And I know that works in government entities, because we did that at the school district with a $500, $500 million a year budget, and the cut was not 50/50. We got more than 50%. So, I'm not sure at this point, unless I can be shown, that there's a lot of folks doing this for governmental entities, that it's a path worth going down.
Thank you, Mr. Destin. Dr. Ramswell?
I'm interested in looking at it, but I would like to see some sort of, you know, benefits, pros, cons, some sort of comparison, if possible. It looks like the motion we have now is just to go ahead and issue the RFP. Can y'all elaborate on some of the benefits and pros or cons or anything right now?
Good, Ms. Smith.
Crystal or somebody can speak more specifically, but I know there was at least two or three cost savings items that they specifically found directly. They are a young company. This is 2021. Things are changing nowadays, and there's opportunities. Critical, one of the most critical points on our items here is for livable wages and benefits to attract and maintain high-caliber qualified staff. And this particular company, and maybe others like them, will create less workload for our staff when it comes time to renegotiate continuing service contracts. So, that's going to provide a less workload for our current staff, as well as other items during their hunt and during their research. So, savings in time whenever they're renegotiating things, as well as when they do potentially find savings. That's the savings as well that we'll be able to put towards one of our critical items. You know, if we don't want to waste time putting RFP, I mean, jeez, I'll change my motion to option number two and just waive the competitive, you know, that we don't have to waste time with RFP. But, you know, I, do you know which, do you recall which specific ones? I know there's not a lot, because they're not in the government agencies right now, but they're working on it.
Yeah, they couldn't share with us any specifics, but they thought they could find some savings for us in the telecom industry, which I'm very doubtful of, because we're part of the state of Florida's DMS on special services. So, but I have, I have no opposition to them continuing to go through and seeing if they can negotiate with our existing vendors. But I don't see this RFP falling into our top 10 to-do list anytime soon, because our plates are overfull right now.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, maybe I misunderstood what we were talking about. So, they would renegotiate, or when it came time to renew our continuing services contract, they would go through the whole process to? No, okay. Then I didn't misunderstand. All right. When that came up, I was like, "Oh, no."
Maybe our continuing services contracts, maybe that's the wrong word, but we're talking about negotiated contracts that we have with like Microsoft or data stuff, things that we have deals with for years, you know, five years or whatever, things like that.
I mean, if, if you're passionate about this, and it sounds like you are, I'd be more than welcome to invite them to the next meeting, and they can pitch, you know, tell us all, all the great things they can do for the City of Destin. But I'm, I'm not willing to put more on the staff's plate right now, because I'll put some more on their plate.
All righty, then. We have a motion, we have had plenty of discussion.
I have a question. Do we have to go out to bid for something like this, or could we go forth with this one?
I think under our ordinance, we have to go to bid. Is that correct? Kyle?
Yes, you, under the purchasing manual, this should go out to RFP.
All righty. So, for clarity's sake, you want to reread the motion, just so everybody knows what the motion is?
Well, I want to clarify, so.
Go ahead.
At this point, the idea sounds great, but what I'm hearing from Crystal is it's not an RFP we could issue by the next council meeting or two, that there's too much else on their plate. So, meaning this would be a backburner issue, and is that something we're all comfortable with? Just put it sort of in the lineup?
Let me clarify one thing real quick, too. Under your purchasing manual, your purchasing manual directs you go out for RFP for this type of service because of the threshold amount. You can waive that type of requirement if you choose to, by majority vote.
Thank you, Kyle.
Mayor, let me offer a substitute motion.
Okay.
To get us at least down the road a little bit, but not completely on board. I'll move that we direct city manager to direct the appropriate staff member, Crystal seems to be pretty good at this kind of stuff, to try to do some fast down-and-dirty research with local government entities around North Florida to find out if any of them are using someone like this, and bring a report back to us.
I have an amendment to the motion.
That's a substitute.
That's a substitute motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second. I wouldn't pick Crystal. I would let the city manager either assign, you know, that's his job. He needs to assign, so I'll second it.
I'll be happy to modify it to that extent.
Okay.
If I could add an item on that substitute motion, please, is that now we're adding more time to go do down-and-dirty research and all of this, these types of items, unless I'm misunderstanding. Would it be more beneficial not, I mean, to do the RFP, to put it out there, to just let people come present it? Or I'm even happy to have multiple companies just come present, like Mr. Bagby said, but I don't want to do negative impact by having them research.
And that was why I wanted the city manager to do it, because the city manager or Webb should be able to contact the Florida League of Cities or travel. And, and say, "Hey, does anybody use an efficiency expert or a firm that comes in?" And if, I don't know how many we have now, we used to have 409, it's probably grown, but, you know, if none of the 409 cities come back and say, "Oh, yeah, we use these folks, or we use those folks," then it's pretty much dead, from my perspective. So, that's why I wanted the city manager, because he probably has that ability, some extra net or something.
Without engaging the entire staff that's necessary to do an RFP.
Just for clarity's sake, Mr. Destin, could you reiterate your motion?
It was to direct the, excuse me, direct the city manager to try to reach out to his fellow municipal and governmental people in the, in the state, particularly in North Florida, to see if anyone is going down this path and what results they've had.
Okay. And you second, Mr. Bagby?
Yes, sir.
All right. We've had discussion. Let's take this to a vote.
So, we're voting on the substitute motion, correct? Just for clarity.
Eyes have it. Put it on your things-to-do list, Lance.
Got it. Item 4G, Councilwoman Abear turned in her resignation to the TDC council, and so therefore we need to appoint a new member to represent the council on the TDC council.
I recommend Dewey.
Second.
It only makes sense.
Yeah, I had kind of signed up for that. Thanks.
Around here, if you get, if you get volunteered, you're stuck anyway, so let's go ahead and Here we go. Eyes have it, unanimous. Thank you, Dewey, for stepping up.
Just a few announcements, Mr. Mayor.
How about it, sir?
Tomorrow night in this room, and I'll need help with the time, but the county will be hosting a meeting regarding helicopters at the airport. Do you know that time? 5:30? Thank you very much. In this room. So, for those watching or those here, if you want to attend.
It's noticed for council.
And it has been noticed, so if multiple members of the council want to attend, you're okay.
How is the layout going to be set up for that meeting in this room, please?
We're not planning on changing anything, to my knowledge, from what you see right now, and if we did, it would be spread out even further, but Ms. Cop is looking at it.
No, I just, I think that Councilmember Abear is wondering who's on the dais. It would not be the City of Destin, because it's not our, this is what we discussed earlier, that it would not be the city. I just wanted Lance to confirm.
Yeah, can you confirm, will those from Timberlake and the county be up here? I mean, where are they going to sit, so we, as an audience, attendees, we sit out there?
Mr. Warren's been working on the technology. They need microphones, is the bottom line. So, Mr. Warren, do you want to touch on that?
Sure. I believe it's going to be in a presentation format, so I have not worked out those specific details, but we will be using the technology here in the staff tables with them. So, to answer your question, I'm not sure if they're going to be at the dais or not, but we're going to ensure that we have the best visibility as we go through this presentation for our live stream, because it will be available. So, we are encouraging people to, we have limited space in here, so we'd encourage people to watch that live stream and participate that way. But we're trying to, we'll work with the county, and we'll get it set up to the best of our ability to where it's easily seen by everyone.
And I just want to make it known, I will not be at that meeting tomorrow. I don't get it, I don't hit the doc till 6 o'clock, so I won't be in attendance, but I'm sure some of y'all will. All righty, then.
Few more announcements. Ms. Firth, can you let the council know about the annual Big Truck Day that we had to postpone last year, and we're going to move forward with it again this year, which is good, good for the kids in our community? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Big Truck Day is Friday at the community center parking lot, 9 to 11. So, that's always fun for the kids and the big boys.
Thank you, Ms. Firth. Just a reminder that school does start in the City of Destin a week from tomorrow, so please, if you're out there in TV land or computer land, be aware of the school zones and slow down for our kids out there, so they can all get to school safely and get home safely.
And there'll be a new school zone on Commons.
Thank you. Other than that, as anyone who watches the news at all has seen, that there's been some uptick in the conversation about resurgence of COVID. From staff's point of view, at this point in time, we're simply monitoring CDC guidelines and the Health Department directives, and we don't see a reason at this point to make any moves. If that changes, I'll be coming before you to ask your opinion and your permission to move forward on something else if we need to.
And city manager, I do have one quick update. On the back-to-the-helicopter agreement, or I'm sorry, the helicopter meeting, we will be having the directors from the county, because this is their meeting, they will actually be at the dais doing the presentation.
Dr. Ramswell, while we're in the announcement deal, we have a special night, Thursday night, correct, at Destin High School?
Yes, Thursday is the grand opening celebration for Destin High School. It'll start at 6 o'clock. Everyone is welcome to come. It's the community school, so we want the community to come on out and see the new school and meet some of the teachers. The students will be there. Z96 is going to come out and do a live broadcast from the school. It's going to be an amazing event, so I hope all of y'all can come and see what it's all about and what all we've been busy doing.
Thank you, Dr. Ramswell.
Last, last.
Ask a question, just to make sure, the helicopter meeting, there's not going to be a problem, sunshine, if more than one of us show up?
It's been noticed for that, so one or more of you may show up, and I believe more than one of you does plan to show up, and you'd be able to provide input as well.
Last item I have is, we attentively scheduled for August the 9th, a third budget workshop, if needed, and I'm asking the council if the council would like for us to keep that budget workshop for a week from today, or if you want to forego it.
Don't, do we need to wait until our individual meetings are done to see if there's any recommendation from Crystal or you to have that? Just, can we keep it and cancel it later?
We can.
I would agree with that analysis.
I would, too.
Because until we've had those individuals, we don't know if we need to have the workshop.
Yeah, just keep it on our calendars. We can always erase it.
Very good. That's all I have, sir. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so Kyle, you've been spared that. We do have item 6, which is our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like that motion.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? But is unanimous, so moved. All righty. Mr. Braden is unable to attend. Dr. Ramswell?
So, I have on here old pier piling issue, and this was an item that emerged from our beach advisory committee meeting. It's one of those things that I think most of us are aware of, the old pilings that are there from the Crystal Beach Pier that washed away in 1974, I believe. But apparently, what has happened is, over time, a lot of the wood of that structure has rotted away, and now there's open rebar, exposed rebar, bent rebar, and people are starting to actually run into it. And there's a concern that there could be a serious injury, especially if the water's cloudy or the surf is up. So, I'm not sure who has the authority, if there's an existing submerged land lease or how it would work on that piece of property, but we need to take a look at that and see who does have the authority and see what we can do to rectify this exposed rebar. I think there used to be a sign that said submerged pilings, but it's not out there anymore, at least as far as anybody I have spoken to can see, and I haven't seen it. So, Lance or Lisa, I'm not sure who would be the one looking at this, but Lance, can you speak? Kyle? Whom ever would like to speak? Feel free.
I'll give it to Kyle. He's been in contact.
I've actually spoken with the general counsel for FDP and the Ocalus County Attorney about this. Both entities are looking into it. I don't believe that the City of Destin ever had any ownership interest in that pier. I think Dewey could probably attest, that was before the city was even incorporated. That fell into disuse. So, it might be a county-owned structure. They were looking at it, and both entities were going to see what they could find. and both entities were going to see what they could find out.
But as soon, as long as we can get that ball rolling with the correct entities, so that that can be looked at, that'd be great.
Follow up with them.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. And then, I don't have on here, but I have it in my notes, to ask about the livery vessel update. Where do we stand on the permits that have been issued on those? And I don't see Joey here, do we have any, is he online?
Joey's not feeling well tonight, and his second is still in the military part-time, so he's exercising that, his military duties right now. But I will, if it's all right with council, Joey usually puts together a list for me that designates the answers to that exact question. And I think it's going to be easiest for me if I can just email that report out to you guys as soon as I receive, he updates it for me weekly, so that's all right.
Thanks, that'd be great. And then that's all I have, because we already discussed Destin High School, so, thank you. Thursday, Destin High School, 6 PM.
Mr. Destin.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have anything tonight, other than to acknowledge the passing of Destin's first city manager, Mr. Jack Dorman. Knew him well, he also worked on comp plans for municipalities and counties all over North Florida. A good friend and a good city manager, and very saddened by his passing.
Thank you, sir, prayers to his family. Mr. Bagby?
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of things. Mr. City Manager, I'd ask that you put on next meeting's agenda under my name a discussion on staff attendance at council meetings and workshops, and under my name on the September 20th meeting, on the staff reporting matrix. You get, you know, I like, we get a monthly budget update, we get a quarterly investment update, we get, we used to get a quarterly, oh, the vessels.
Livery.
No. The derelict vessel, thank you. Yeah, the derelict, and then that went away, and then it came back. So, now it's gone away again, so I'd just like for us to look at that list, and then we can talk about it and say, because different people want to see different things. I want to see more budget stuff, but other folks might want to see the livery vessel update, and then we just have a standard reporting format that we get, monthly, weekly, quarterly, whatever. Thank you very much, it's good to be back.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Abear.
Thank you, Mayor. As the Waterways Committee Rental Chair, we had a meeting this past week, and this was our third meeting. This is held over in Shalimar at the county commissioner's office, and there are 11 members on this committee with me from boating rental owners, as well as the Coast Guard, the Sheriff's Department, and several other businesses. And the video was discussed, and it is being broadcasted throughout all of the short-term rentals. It's part of the beach TV now, so they're trying to make sure people are aware before they get to the dock and get in their pontoon boat, and they're so excited that they're not paying attention to get an idea of what a pontoon rental and how to make sure you have the, trim the motor up and then trim it back down before you start it up and leave. So they are working diligently to get that done, to make sure that people are aware of what needs to be done if you're going to rent a pontoon boat. The state law in January of 2023 will require all renters to have a boating license, so they will not be able to rent a pontoon boat until 2023. So it's a year and a half out, but at least it's coming, it has been passed, and that will be law. Two other things that, I think Mr. Braden had asked about a review for Lance, and I talked to Lance about this, not a public review, but can we get from HR, like the forms, so that we can each individually rate Lance? He's never, I don't think we've done a review on him, it's been 18 months?
Yeah, Teresa, we are planning on doing that this year. The process typically starts in October, I believe, Nicole? Yeah, she's nodding, October is when it will start.
So we, I'm sorry, we actually did look into this because this subject came up, and the system as it's written right now starts in October, so we had collectively decided that it would make more sense to go ahead and go with it the way that it's written, even though there has been some time that it hadn't been done in a little while. It just makes more sense to start it the way that it's written and kind of backpay it if needed.
Thank you.
Nicole's referring to a resolution that council passed in about 2013 or so that designated that as a Starcom.
Okay, thank you. And then, I know we've been talking about the staff and pay raises and things like that. I don't know if I heard this right, but did Joey get a promotion to a director's job? And Chris got the job as code compliance manager? Is that something that's being thought about? And someone's picking it up and it's out on the social media untruly?
Joey has always been the head of the code compliance department. What we did do was upgrade a code compliance officer position to deputy code compliance manager position. I hope that, we did do that, we upgraded a position.
So that's the position Chris is in, correct?
That's correct.
And the position that Joey's in, he's still code compliance manager, right?
Director, manager, I mean, it's, 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 director is by, I mean, all the others are, of most independent departments are called directors, so.
I got it, I thought he was under Lewis, but that's not true, he's on his own, right?
That's right, we broke that department, or it was a division, and now it's a department. So we broke that out a little over two years ago.
Okay, thank you for clarity.
Yeah, if you want, I can, that's what happened. Code compliance used to be code enforcement, it was under community development. A couple of years ago, it was pulled out of community development and became its own department, known as code compliance. At that time, Joey was put in charge of that department, he was the manager. I do believe his title was changed to director, but essentially, it's the same thing, he was always in charge of the department. Is that correct?
That's correct.
About the title, okay.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, and more importantly, for those watching online that wanted to know that. And then, the last thing that I have is, I was asked by several visitors to find out why are there so many ghost chairs and umbrellas on the beach? So I went down, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, and went at the June Decker Beach, right between that porch and the building that's about 50% under remodel and 50% of the occupancy, and they had 30 chairs lined up from the edge all the way down. I was there for about five hours, and there were never any folks in those chairs. And I don't know if we have anything that we used to enforce or, you know, talked about, but I think Walton County has something that, you know, pretty much is like the ghost chair umbrella thing. If there's nobody on the beach, you know, don't need to set up all 25, maybe you set up half of them. Is there anything on our books that has any of that addressed?
Not at this time, no. Well, we do have a, like 20-foot corridor from the mean high water line up, but there's nothing specific to ghost chairs, other than they shouldn't be within that area, which, under Florida statutes, also has to be open for people to traverse.
And is it true that if you don't have a band on for a certain unit, you can't pass from the public beach, past that condominium, to the next part of public beach? You cannot traverse that, because there were some tourists there that didn't have a band on and were asking the guy why they couldn't go past, and he said, "You're not part of this condominium."
There's nothing in the city's regulations that would have anything to do with that. I'm not sure what individual private property condo associations are doing, but under state law, the public is allowed to traverse the beach down by the water's edge.
All right, and then the last question is, what about the tents? The 8 by 10 and 10 by 10 tents that they put up, are those allowed on the beach? I thought back when I was Chair of Parks and Recreation, we were putting out that you could use the umbrellas, like the ones you buy at, you know, Walmart, but you could not put up the 8 by 10, 8 by eights and 10 by tens. Is that not enforced?
It's not in the code, we started to take that up, and we started to prepare, we were working on an ordinance that was creating corridors on the beach for safety purposes, and the tents and the chairs and things like that were kind of encompassed in that ordinance. We then had a lot of stakeholder input and objections to the corridors, and it ended up that the ordinance just kind of fell by the wayside. But if the city council wants to take up ghost chairs and/or tents or something of that nature, you know, it's in your discretion to direct us to do so, and we can take it back up.
And the only legislative authority we have is on our city-owned beach access. We can't dictate that on private property, correct?
Well, that is the question.
It's the problem, and so it comes down to customary use.
It is the issue that we have not, we have chosen not to take up at this time, but there are varying opinions on that.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Kim.
I mean, we can get into that if you want to.
I'd throw that one out there, because that's going to be the pushback from private property owners.
And that's what happened, council in about, I think it was 2018-ish, when the litigation was beginning in Walton County, or when Walton County was taking over, taking on that customary use issue. It was this council's directive to kind of stay out of it, wait and see what happens. Now it's been several years, and they're still kind of in the early stages of that litigation, hasn't gone very far, so if council wants to change their directive, let me know.
Yeah, we were looking at the chains and everything that were being put up as well, as being a danger, because a lot of times, they keep those up, and then if there's an emergency and you have, you know, beach rescue or the sheriff's office really trying to fly down the beach, sometimes you can't see, and yeah, there was a concern for that problem as well.
And we've run into issues, Kim and I have talked about this numerous times, about the safety zone. What we did, I remember when we, when I first became mayor, we talked about doing a 20-foot one by the dune line and then 20-foot on the water's edge. The dune line one pretty much got thrown out the window quickly, because that wouldn't fly on private property rights. We still haven't really got together with the county and the fire department on the 20-foot safety fairway, which would address some of these guys setting up on the beach, but we haven't done anything ordinance-wise to that effect, correct?
Well, we have something in our ordinance that predates any of that discussion regarding that 20 feet. So that's in there, it's the additional corridors that, like you said, were objected to. And we even talked about potentially working with private property owners to get some voluntary compliance for corridors in the back, or perhaps even going north to south, so that if there was an emergency, emergency services could get down there. But ultimately, I think they ended up telling us that they didn't need it, as I understood.
Yeah, and another, and another big issue really for us is, how do we enforce that? You know, that's the biggest problem of it all. When they re-nurish the beaches, technically, according to state statute, everything from the re-nourished area, which is a supposed imaginary GPS line, that forward to the water line is now state property. Unfortunately, after all those re-nourishments, most of those lines are back in the water again, so that creates problems as well. So Jim, I know you're dealing with this on a daily basis.
Yeah, I would just say, A, we don't have any rights on the private property, and B, what Walton County's found out is, we got rid of the ghost sets from the vendors, only to be replaced by ghost sets from individuals who now run down there with the little aluminum chairs and the little umbrellas from Walmart, because they know the vendors can't set up till 8 o'clock. So if I get down there at 7, I can stake out the very front, and I've got pictures of row upon row of just aluminum chairs of, well, we haven't solved the problem. And I don't think we will ever solve that problem. When's the last time we surveyed the beach, or the TDC surveyed the beach? We used to do it like every two or three years, because that erosion control line is not in the water in Walton County. Now, I don't know, maybe we have more erosion, but I saw. Well, there is no erosion control line on Holiday Isle, is there? There was? Oh, from the sand we put on there? Okay, but not the state?
No, not the state. Well, I mean, it was a county, it was county, state, and city re-nourishment on this last pump out.
Did they actually survey and establish an erosion control line out there? I don't remember them doing that.
In the Crystal Beach area, there is a ECL, and I think a small amount somewhere on the other side of Henderson Beach, but it's very short. But there definitely is a ECL on the, on the Crystal Beach side.
No, I know Crystal Beach, I don't think there's one on Holiday Isle. I don't think it was ever surveyed or put in.
I'd have to go back, I know there, I believe there's a short one over there, but it's very short. It's not much of anything.
Difference between this and a beach re-nourishment was that that sand was placed there due to the need to dredge the East Pass and not with the intention of actually refurbishing the beaches. So that's why I'm not sure whether there's an ECL there or not, but that's something we need to look at.
I'm pretty sure there's not an ECL there, but there is, and so my question again is, when's the last time the county, or the TDC, or us surveyed Crystal Beach where the beach nourishment project was done?
I will have to find that answer out and report back to you guys.
Okay, yeah, because I know Matt's not with, Matt Trammell's not with them anymore, but they were the ones that always did the surveys.
I think it's been 15 or 20 years. And the last line I can see out there is the CCCL line over Noriega Point and going southeast, but.
Yeah, but there is no ECL, there is no ECL west of Henderson Beach.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It sounds like, Jim, that even if you're a private property owner, you've still got problems with ghost chairs, so it doesn't, I was going to make a snide remark that, well, all we got to do is continue to buy more beach, and then we can, the City of Destin can control our beaches, but apparently it's a little more difficult than that. So anyways, people are going to complain, we'll do the best we can. That's all you can do, just try to be good neighbors, everyone out there. Please be a good neighbor, and don't be a but, but we'll see how that all works out.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you, and welcome to our dais, we're glad to have you.
Thank you, Ms. Abear, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have an update on the vacant harbor code enforcement officer position. We put that out anywhere to hire anybody yet?
It's been advertised, and do you want to comment on that, Nicole?
Sure, it's been advertised, and all of the applicants that have come in have gone over to our code compliance department. It's on our website, and I believe it's also on Indeed, but at this time, we do not have a candidate moving through the process.
And is that based on the updated job description that Mr. Braden was working on with Lance, city manager?
That's correct.
So is it a, is it a specific, what's the, what's the position that we're trying to hire? Is it a specific title?
It's still a harbor compliance officer. We're not in a position as of yet to have a harbor master.
Thank you. Were we supposed to do something with LSVs tonight, based off of the last meeting we had?
I think because Councilmember Braden's not here, we did not put it back on the agenda.
But I'm going to talk about it in just a second, if you, unless you want to.
Well, I was just going to make a motion to table it, not bring it up next time, I guess.
Okay.
I thought we were supposed to expect it tonight on the agenda.
So it got de facto tabled, basically, Kevin, if you just want to leave it alone.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, sir. The helicopter meeting tomorrow night, we talked in the past about, I think, at one point, myself went to the county commission meeting to say something. I know Ms. Cop has been, has been, you know, a representative of legalized. Are we wanting as a city to take any stance tomorrow, from an individual or from Ms. Cop at this particular meeting tomorrow night? Or are we just going to be participating as individual residents ourselves? Because going into tomorrow, I don't think we have any stance as a city of Destin.
We as city can't do anything, because I asked Ms. Cop, can we say?
Oh, no, we can't do anything, I'm saying, do we need to have a, like, we've commissioned Mr. Destin before about going in front of, you know, the commission. Like, last time, we went from the commission to do certain things.
I think, I think you could speak your own position on the issue. I thought we made a resolution. We passed a resolution stating our, our position as a city council that, that we had grave concerns about the operation of Timberview helicopters and its effect on our community, I don't have it at.
The resolution wasn't specific to any particular company, but we did submit our concerns and support for the county's efforts in that resolution, so.
Whether or not they actually read it is, I guess, the question, but, so, I guess tomorrow night, I guess I'm just asking is, do we want to reiterate our city's position, our council's position? Or do we just not want to have any position tomorrow night and come as individual citizens? I'm going to be here. I'm going to be here as a citizen, sure, but.
I think you, if you would like to, you could probably bring that resolution and read it at the podium. That's public record. Be a good time to reiterate our position, actually. Jim?
I would say if you want to present the city's resolution, or I don't know if Kim's attending, she could.
She'll be there. I will be there.
She could present it. One of y'all should present it. You know, my, my issue is, everything I read on it today has nothing to do with the helipad and it all has to do with the airport. Well, what, what I worry most about, if you've been out on 98, when those helicopters take off, headed down 98, and it's like it's coming in your windshield, it's like, do something about that too, please.
I think that one's under a long-term contract. I was talking with Carolyn Ketchel and she said, it doesn't seem like there's anything they can do with that one right now, but maybe if there's enough.
You know, I don't, I believe the FAA can, you know, they can put AGL limits on them. You know, minimum limits that they're going to fly or whatever. I think there's. I know. But yeah, if you want to be, bring that resolution, one of you.
Yeah, I mean, there's, that's one issue, Mr. Bagby, as you mentioned. And there's, there's many issues that I think others of us and any citizens has, have, um, including a similar recurrence of the county not really, you know, participating with, or allowing us to help or anything. You know, tomorrow night, they're going to put this thing out there and I really hope that they're uh, going to listen to citizens and stakeholders that are in the public tomorrow night and.
Can I ask one question on that? What, what happened to the airport advisory committee? I know the county pulled out, but I don't think we ever killed it. And maybe we look at, okay, he's pointing over here. Did we kill it?
Yes, sir. The committee themselves requested that it be sunsetted in 2017, April.
After we requested a seat.
Uh.
Remember that?
Yeah. Okay. Maybe we look at reviving our own airport advisory committee.
We've talked about it recently.
Yeah. Uh, the last item, sir, is that today I was, we were talking about the, the new park on the harbor and there was issues brought up about quality of work occurring again with the contractor currently. Um, and it seems like to be a repetitive issue with the particular contractor over there. And I know that Mr. Baumann's got some legal reasons of what we can and can't do, but I just didn't know if there's any discussion we wanted to have about. Contractor does something wrong, we ask him to fix it, he fixes it, he does something wrong again, we ask him to fix it, he fixes it. How, how many wrongs and Band-Aids do you keep doing where the project's 100% complete one day with 15 Band-Aids that got put on in, or fixes, whatever you want to call it? Uh, then later on, we have to come back and, God forbid, something happens or breaks or whatever. But, you know, it sounds like we're damned if we do now, we're damned if we don't, and deal with it later, do we deal with it now? I just didn't know if there's any other thoughts or discussions on that park project.
I've got a couple of people here lined up that want to weigh in on it. Ms. Abear?
Well, I see the city manager has, um, you want to weigh in, Lance? Do you have input on that? Because I have something else.
Sure, I'd love to weigh in. Um, I believe Councilman Schmidt's correct. I mean, I have some concerns about the quality of work that's taking place there. And this is not, um, any dig against the contractor that's, that's doing the work. It's just the, the final product, I don't know that it meets, um, the expectations that we have. Um, we do have an obligation to give them an opportunity to cure the problem. Uh, we've reported the problem to them and they have come back, actually this morning, um, came back, um, with a proposal to cure, cure the problem, um, that we're currently dealing with. So I, I think it's only fair, especially with federal money involved, that we give them the opportunity to cure this and see where, where it lands from there. That being said, um, there have been more, there's been more than one issue where I've had some concerns. And I would like to offer to the council a suggestion that if you're okay, I would like to invite the contractor to come to the next council meeting um, so that we can have a discussion with him about moving forward. Um, what our expectations are and how, if, if we can help him do a better job, then we'll help him do a better job. And then I'm willing to reach out to that contractor and see if he would be willing to, um, come in here and, and I can put together a list of the concerns that we have and, and we can give him an opportunity to, to talk to us about those concerns.
My question is, is can we fire him and hire someone else?
The simple answer is no, not without serious legal consequence at this time.
So I was just going to make a suggestion that we put this item under Kevin's name on the next agenda and that we invite, um, our construction manager, our, whoever you think we need in the staff and the contractor to come and update us on the status of that project. And.
With that, Jim, I think a list of the issues.
Yes, a list of the issues.
So we know what we're talking about.
So in, in that way, it's the, the public, if they want to weigh in on it, they can come. It's on the agenda, it's noticed. We all know, you know, we discussed it briefly in my thing, uh, meeting this morning or whatever. And I was like, well, that, that would have been nice though. I could have gone down there this weekend and kind of looked at it and walked the thing. So I like, I like things to be noticed because I have to kind of put my eyes. So if you don't mind putting it under your name on the next agenda.
Can you add to that list too, what our options are moving forward in terms of remedies or, um, anything along that line, since we can't just switch out and fire? Yeah. What can we do and as many as y'all can think of?
All right, Kevin? Is that it? All right.
Mayor, real quick, I, I know that we've had issues with people complaining about the parking for $5, 24 hours or whatever here in Destin, $10 at the Emerald Grand. I was in Nashville this weekend and it cost $33 for seven hours to go watch a baseball game. And a friend of mine was in Las Vegas, it was $90 to park for five hours. So anyone watching, it's really inexpensive to park in this fantastic town for an entire day. So please do not be upset with the $5 charge.
Hopefully we'll improve the parking that we have. All right, for one of the few times, I actually have something officially under my list. I'm going to try to go over the two fast ones first. Um, and I've talked with Webb and our land use attorney. As you all know, because you've had plenty of complaints and I'm, I'm sure most of you have actually seen it with your own eyes, sometimes around nine o'clock at Cr- at the Krispy Kreme and anytime around lunch or dinner at Whataburger. Well, Whataburger's kind of like Krispy Kreme, it's a late night traffic backup. But we were pretty adamant back in the day, uh, when, when folks started charging for parking to address, um, Harbor Walk Village and Peter Boss and, and a couple of other harbor properties about changing their collection process to prevent backups into their parking lots. And yet we've got these three businesses and a couple more that aren't on my list that are creating really unsafe conditions. And Webb, would you like to weigh in on, on what you've heard back from the sheriff's department or FHP uh, to kind of get us up to date on their perspective of what we may or may not be able to do?
Sure. Uh, this has been a collaborative approach, uh, from multiple staff members. I know that Michael has been reaching out to FDOT, uh, to try to work with them. And Michael, has any new news come out of FDOT? Could you give us an update, what their status is with this?
Sure. Um, spoke to FDOT safety engineer out of Chipley last week. Uh, in a nutshell, he said that the Chick-fil-A issue in particular happens pretty much anywhere that there's a Chick-fil-A. Um, DOT doesn't have an easy remedy for this, but they are running it through their legal department to see if there's a Florida state statute or anything like that that would, uh, be enforceable in a situation like that where you kind of prohibit through traffic by queuing in a drive-through.
Michael, isn't it true too that Chick-fil-A has bought the building two doors down, that longer impact life? So they're going to have the opportunity to create a longer drive-through and perhaps a two-lane drive-through such as one in Panama City has, but that might help alleviate some of that.
Uh, I would defer to Mr. Zunguzi on that. I think he can help us out on, on that process as well as a few other things on this item.
I think YouTube views just shot up about, about 500 just now. Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A, all you had to do is say that. That bigger building.
Uh, to the last question, the answer is yes. And we are in discussions with them as far as their design is concerned. And we are taking very proactive action to try and mitigate the things that are currently happening on their site, uh, with respect to their new site. Uh, to the earlier question that the mayor raised, uh, we have proactively been in discussions with Chick-fil-A currently on their, about their site. And, uh, the city engineer has reached out and we have some ideas that they, we think they can consider, especially for the next season. And so it's been a good discussion, they're, they're willing to do certain things. As you know, some of these businesses do share an entrance. And so there's, the opportunity is for us to do something that we, we're not thought of in the initial review and approval processes. So, uh, we did something nice with, uh, the Emerald Grand when they, uh, studied that pay-to-park, uh, program and we worked with them to try and mitigate that. It's not as perfect as it should, but at least, uh, you know, some efforts were made. So I, I'm, I'm encouraged by, uh, the attitude of the businesses because they do understand, uh, what the issues are within the community and, and access to, to their site. As you know, the market forces are what they are, uh, and it is what it is sometimes. But, um, we'll keep you updated as far as how far we've gone with the, any new changes that can be implemented in the next season.
And, and that's why I reached out to staff to look into, to talk with the sheriff's department and with FHP. And more importantly, in this particular case, like we ended up doing with the, our ordinance on, uh, uh, pay-to-park was working with the business owners themselves. I'm sure that the owners of Krispy Kreme and Whataburger and, um, Chick-fil-A recognize that this is an issue and it's, and it's unsafe. I think legislatively as a, as, as a city, our hands are tied a little bit because, uh, if my understanding is correct, the sheriff's department really doesn't have a lot of, it's just not something they want to bite into. Is that correct? I got it. I'm not going to put you on this, on, on the public record, sir. But it's just, they got enough to do. And, and so, um, hopefully through our community development department and working with the landowners themselves, we can come up with some, um, solutions. But I told people that I would bring it up and put it on the public record, that we have a concern about this. I've just told them, realistically, I didn't think we had any real legislative opportunity to make a change, um, pursuant to those businesses at this time. Maybe down the road, we can find some other avenue. Uh, anyone, anyone want to weigh in on that before I step into my next one?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up question is, when, when you say that legislatively, we did something for the Emerald Grand though, didn't we not? So what's the, why do you say there's a difference between then imposing the ordinance for pay-to-park versus doing something now with a, a use of their zoning or use or something like that currently?
Well, that ordinance still applies to any businesses, not just the harbor, correct, Kim?
That, so the pay-to-park ordinance is citywide, um, so it applies to everybody. It's not just for the Emerald Grand. And it would apply to these property owners as well if they were collecting pay-to-park.
Correctamundo. And so that's a difference. This is not a pay-to-park, this does not follow under our ordinance. So we, we have to approach this one different because they're just doing their normal business. It's not their.
That's up for interpretation, I think, is the normal operation.
Well, that's what we can look into. I mean.
That's just my, my, my thoughts.
No, no, I agree with you 100% Kevin, and that's why I wanted to bring it up to start the discussion of what can we do? I mean, we're brainstorming here, I'm open for suggestions.
Well, the Krispy Kreme, and I think we were talking about, the Krispy Kreme also has an access where it comes off of that road that leads into the Old Time Pottery. There is a road there behind that one corner business that I don't know if the owner of Krispy Kreme could move to where that's where the traffic looped out and around the drive-through, which would make it easier. And I know Whataburger has their side entrance, which, which goes down Stallman. So I don't know which is the worst, to have Stallman backed up or to have 98 backed up. But, you know, it, it's a 50/50 shot there, but it's just not enough. And I know it's because of employees, they can't open their lobby yet.
Well, there's food for thought, Louis. Those two properties she's speaking of does have maybe an innovative way to loosen the impact on 98, uh, working with those property owners. That might be where I think we start before we have to pass another or try to implement another ordinance.
Maybe we could talk with them because my recollection of both Krispy Kreme and Whataburger is that they have like a, a side lane. When you're actually in line getting your food, there's a way that, and people will use that to pass or, or get out. If their interiors are closed and there's not just people parking to go inside and eat, maybe we could discuss with them opening that up to a second lane of drive-through traffic so that then you've got more in line up out of the street.
Um, Whataburger and Fort Walton opens up two lanes to keep that from happening? Uh, we, we are not regulating drive-throughs. We could.
Well, y'all keep that on your, your minds. And, uh, if you would like to see that as an agenda item, maybe in your personal meetings with Lance, uh, bring that topic up and we'll see what's on the next agenda. I just wanted to start that discussion and, and have a little input from our, our staff on that. So from there, I'm actually going to steal some of Mr. Destin's thunder from his comments made last meeting when we were discussing 98, uh, slow vehicle, the, the, um, uh, slow speed vehicle ordinance. And, you know, you talked about tabling it, how to resolve some of those facts. And he said, you know, we could just lower the speed limit. And I've been chewing on that for two weeks and it's probably the best idea I've ever heard, um, approached like a captain would. And that's just keep it simple stupid. That's how I operate my business and my life. And that's exactly probably, you know, you were making reference to the abrasive on, on Highway 98. But to address a slow, um, vehicle, um, slow speed vehicles and their impact, you know, we, we've got this commitment to be multimodal. And by knocking out Airport Road and make banning that to those vehicles, that cuts, that cuts Destin in half to the people that own these things. And of course, we all know who wrecks on Airport Road. And, and so I got on my bike and rode it all the way around town. Then I got my truck and drove around at 30 miles an hour on all the roads, which is the majority of the roads in this city, are 30 mile an hour speed limits or less, like around the schools and crosswalks and stuff like that. And you can fairly effectively and in a timely manner get around Destin at 30 miles an hour. Well, going at 30 miles an hour around town falls right into our vision of creating a safe and harmonic, uh, community for us to live in. Uh, so multimodal, safety, uh, addressing not splitting our city in half. I think Mr. Destin hit the hammer, uh, the nail on, on the head with his hammer when he said, maybe we need to look into, to lowering the speed limit. And what I would like to entertain from this council would be a motion to make all city-owned streets and roadways a 30 mile an hour speed limit, with the exception of already lower speed limits that are in place. So I, I think that would solve, that would make us more multimodal. It would deal with the issue of the slow speed vehicles. We could actually finish the ordinance, we wouldn't have to table it. And, and it would make this place a, a better place to live. There you go, City Manager. Thank you for the, for doing that.
And Lance, for the first meeting in September, if you could put under my name, um, discussing the, um, drive-throughs of those three businesses so we can make that, uh, something that we can either create something with some teeth in it or encourage the management of those businesses to help us, help our citizens and our tourists to be more safe?
All right, lastly, and this will mean, hopefully it won't. Um, we've already passed a resolution to enter into the negotiation with the county over the, uh, development of the second bed tax district. And we have a legal team and we're about to enter into this process, this negotiation process. And unfortunately, we can't talk amongst ourselves because of. process, and unfortunately, we can't talk amongst ourselves because of sunshine laws and rules and regulations. We can only do it here in the public. Since that draft ordinance was made, and the comments that we've made on the public record, and Mr. Destin's been at multiple county commissions meetings and has met with commissioners, they've made a lot of concessions of a lot of our concerns. Not all of them. There are still a couple of legal concerns that our legal team have on just the legality of some of the things they're trying to do just based on Florida statute, but that's really kind of outside the realm of what our concerns really were. So what I would like to talk about here is if we're going to go into negotiating position through this process, what are our goals and objectives? Because they haven't been clear. Can we accept the concessions that are made, or are they not good enough, or do we want to take it a little bit further? Is it to negotiate that things that are going to be beneficial to the city of Destin? Or is it, well, we just don't want them to have a taxing district at all, and we're going to file a lawsuit and take them to court? So I would like, because this is the only opportunity we have to talk about it, we're waiting to the very end so Mr. Burns could, part of our legal team could join in here. And I would just like to see if we could kind of get a feel or set the temperature of where we want to land during this negotiation process. So I know it's kind of got some potholes in it and maybe some danger zones we may or may not step into, but I figure we ought to kind of set the tone of what's going to be acceptable and what's not. And Mr. Burns, take it away.
I actually think that's a good idea, Mayor, just to stay out of the legal issues. But you're talking about the practical, what are the negotiating points, what do you want? I think this is a good time because y'all are not going to have a lot of time with each other before we start the negotiations. I would appreciate some direction too, I'm sure the attorneys would as well.
Although I would say if we're going to get into those kinds of details in the ordinance, we probably need to prepare a staff report and give you some analysis. I mean, unless you've all reviewed it, it wasn't in the agenda packet tonight, but I would say we should probably bring that back as an agenda item with the information.
I'd like to do this in the next meeting if we could, so we could come prepared to give more discussion on that.
Right. But that's why I kind of wanted to keep it at the 30,000-foot view and not get down to item by item. What are we doing timeline-wise? Because we do have a time issue here before our first meeting.
First off, too, regarding what Ms. Cops said, I think it is a good idea to maybe collect the thoughts and come at the next meeting, but nothing y'all would say would bind y'all.
Good.
Ultimately, y'all have to vote on something to bind, and so the comments that you're deliberating on, that's just debate, that's legislative history that really has no applicability in the court.
But Mr. Burns, the situation with me being on the TDC, because they were going to force a vote here in the next two weeks on their thoughts of it, and I'm not going to be in town for the two weeks, that's why I withdrew from that committee, so we are at the table as a member can vote with whatever that is. Are what we were talking about tonight, do we need to have that discussion before the vote that they do at the TDC?
I think if you start talking about tonight, that'll be a good idea, but depending on how much time you want to talk about it, and then we'll come back at the next meeting and discuss it further, y'all can kind of suss out some of your ideas tonight, if y'all thought about it. If y'all aren't ready, it's up to you. But again, there's nothing y'all can do in your debate that's going to bind y'all.
Yeah, I just, you know, and basically, this is a fishing expedition of sorts because we don't get to talk to each other outside of a notice meeting, that's why I wanted to say, like, they made provision for us to get an extra $1.5 million for nine years, they decided to protect our capital improvements over the next five years. I mean, to me, those are good concessions, I'm happy with those. I want to hear from others, like, well, what if they don't allow our citizens to vote? Is that, you know, where do we stand on that? And I've got some people lined up here, so I think my fishing exposition is about, I'm casting my first line right now. Mr. Destin, if you'd like, you can start, and then Mr. Bagby.
Jeff, real quick, just a question, Jeff.
Go ahead.
On the Chapter 164 process, are we still looking at August 18 as the first?
That's good. I think August 18 is the new date, tentatively. Every entity other than the county has agreed on that. I'll go to the county commission meeting tomorrow and see what they do and let y'all know immediately.
So that does, so we got time to come back in the council process and have a further discussion with motions and stuff like that.
You will, but it's a pretty complex issue. If y'all want to talk about your 50,000-foot view tonight, that would be a good idea, I think.
Mr. Destin.
Thank you, Mayor. At the moment, we don't have any concessions. We asked for a 60-day delay, they've twice refused that. We have an ordinance that is in the drafting stage that has changed two or three times in the last two, three weeks.
At the last hour.
And so we have nothing from them so far. We still have our original concerns, they've not been addressed until an ordinance has been passed, and even then, as we pointed out to them in our original contacts with them, ordinance can be changed the very next meeting. That's really not what we were looking for. So I don't see that our position has changed much with them at all. We asked for a delay so that we could work the issues out, and other than saying, we're going to write an ordinance that will address them, but we don't really know what the ordinance is going to say, but we do, but now we don't, and there are a number of things in the ordinance that we probably believe on their face are not lawful. So I don't see that we've made a lot of progress at all in that...
Yeah, but I want to argue on that particular point with you, that we asked to see it in writing, well, they've shown us in writing, and we didn't like the first draft, and now they've brought us a second draft in writing. So you can't say we haven't seen it in writing because we have up to this point. Now, grant you, you're right, they could pass any ordinance they want, but right now, that's the draft ordinance that they proposed to pass.
Until tomorrow. And they've changed it a number of times, so I don't know what the final draft's going to look like until it goes through the draft process. I don't know what the ordinance is going to look like, but oh yeah, we're going to vote anyway. And we're going to ask the TDC to approve an ordinance that's not been voted on. So the point I make is that we are not making any progress, as far as I can tell, and if they continue to press forward to try to have the vote on the date that they have already put the supervisory elections that they're going to have the vote on, we're not going anywhere.
So with your rationale, and I'm not trying to be an advocate for the county because there's three big issues that I don't agree with myself, what I'm saying is I'm trying to get a feel for us, if we're going to go into this process that's afforded us by the Florida statute, where do we want to land, is basically what I'm getting to. Because if where we want to land is preventing the ordinance from passing completely, I don't see we do that unless we get our legal team together and file a lawsuit, because the process is supposed to be a negotiation. We've got how many municipalities that have...
Actually, as of now, we have Fort Walton Beach, Mary Esther, Valpee, and Crestview.
And they're part of that, they're going to be part of that negotiation process, so I'm just, like I said, I'm fishing. I'm not saying that what they've done up to this point is honorable or great or anything like that, but they have made written concessions to some of our demands, and I said, I'm just kind of trying to feel like what's going to be acceptable at what point with this council.
Until we know what is even going to be discussed, how can we make that decision, Gary? And since we have this process with these other municipalities that has not taken place, that is not concretely scheduled yet, I don't feel that we're in a position to concede on any issues yet. I mean, we don't even know what the issues that we might concede would be on.
We actually don't even know what the ordinance is because at the last TDD meeting, which I watched, I believe that Mr. Coffey said this ordinance is not going to be the same at the next TDC meeting, and...
Correct.
You can correct me if I'm wrong. He said, we don't know how we're going to change it yet. Here's the draft as of now.
And the rest of that verbiage was, it might change because we know there are folks who want to see to the table, but at this point, we're not at that. And so I felt like this is not a win for Destin, and anything that they quote conceded to, I felt like it was not written with the best intentions. And they've made changes because we've said, wait a minute, what about this, what about this? Well, they were like, okay, well, we'll give you one of your six things that you're worried about. So that's why, they're going to try and vote and push this through, and I just, it's not right.
And that would be the exact point. Until we go through this process, how would we know that we would even have any points to say, okay, we're happy at this point? We're way premature to even have this discussion until we know what it is that we would even be discussing.
That being said, we got to have a general idea of what's important to us as a city in essence, not, I hate the word concession, that they've made concessions because you are correct, they have not made concessions. They have changed the language, and they've taken into some of the things that we've asked for into account. I agree, they haven't made any concessions. I'm not asking for us to make any concessions, I just want to get a feel for where, what is our intent? Do we, are we want to be negotiable, or do we want to just throw our, draw the line in the sands and put these people to work?
One thing we definitely want is for the TDD process to be legal and for the proposal to be legal, and right now, attorneys for the city do not believe that it is proposed in a legal manner, and if I'm wrong, our special counsel can correct me. But that's number one, and so it's very hard to talk about where we want to end up when they have, they appear to us attorneys for the city to not agree with the basic legalities of the issue. But Mr. Burns can add to that if he desires to.
I've been waiting patiently. Now, I'm not going to wait.
I can maybe talk to y'all about the minutia.
Jeff, hold on, hold on. Just stand by, Jeff.
Yeah.
Jim wants to talk.
I've been waiting patiently, no, that's good. So Dewey will tell you, the first thing I have, follow the law. You want to know what I want? I want them to follow the law. They're not following the law, period. Okay? When they start following the law, then a lot of the things that I think we want will fall into place. The second thing I want is I want us to listen to council, council, councils, okay? I thought Jeff gave a great presentation two meetings ago, last meeting, I don't even remember when it was, but last meeting, okay? And laid out clearly the problems that we had, that the councils had with the proposal that the county was doing. The third thing I want them to do, you talk about they're making accounts for us, not concessions, but every one of those could be wiped out at the next Board of County Commissioners meeting. So to me, they haven't accounted for anything or given us any concessions or given us...
They can legislatively do that through eternity, so you got to kind of, I like your follow the law part a lot.
Yeah. But my point...
You can't try to, you can't make an argument about what could happen.
Yeah.
You can't make the argument about what they may do the next meeting or the next commission or what have you, because that's always present. We can do that here, we can change our ordinances at the next meeting.
I got that, but here, you asked me what I want to see, okay? I don't want to see that, oh, well, we're going to give you $1.5 million for the next five years. You know what? You can give me $1.5 million for this year. That's all you can obligate for. I'm not saying that they don't have good intentions, I'm saying I want something that is legal, that is concrete, that is enforceable, just like Jeff briefed us at the last meeting or briefed y'all at the last meeting. I want a special tax or a separate taxing district.
Yep.
I don't, and I'm only speaking for Jim Bagby. That's what Bay County has done, that's what Walton County has done, that's what six of the, whatever Jeff briefed us on, I want a separate taxing district, okay? I want the initial taxing district to be two pennies, just like the statute says, follow the law. I want the largest bed tax incorporated area, bed tax collecting incorporated area, to have a permanent seat on the TDC, just like Bay County does with Panama City Beach, okay? And I want, you know, I feel like it's, we got to pass this ordinance to figure out what's in it. You know, it's the old Nancy Pelosi, and it's like, hell, no, we're not going to pass it, we're going to fight it until, but you want to know what I want? Follow the law, listen to council, a seat for the largest, you know, if Crestview brings in more money in bed tax, then they ought to have that seat. But I don't see that happening in my lifetime, and I want a separate taxing district. Thank you.
I just caught a blue marlin, I just caught a blue marlin, that cast, right there.
Those are exactly the points that we made at our first trip to the commission. Until we know where we're at, and we don't now, how can we possibly discuss concessions? So I'm going to move that this discussion be terminated as being...
Let's give Mr. Burns an opportunity to give us some wisdom.
Sure, go ahead, and then I'll make that motion.
I've, having appeared in front of Fort Walton, Shalimar, and now Valpee, there is a little bit of concern maybe about the other municipalities maybe wanting to get also some sort of council or a voice at the table. Either it be rotating, I think the Fort Walton Beach attorney suggests, they're going to suggest an idea when we get together at that Chapter 164 meeting of having like, one seat will be Fort Walton one year, Mary Esther the next year, something like that, and maybe a separate board of all the cities that meet and vote to come up with a certain idea that then has that seat on the actual TDC boards. It'd be like a sub-board to the advisory board. I thought those were the kind of ideas you were going to talk about, Mayor, maybe just spitballing right now, maybe kind of like in a workshop format for the TDC meeting. Not the, I agree, Mr. Bagby, the ordinance is still not a good ordinance, it's still not a legal ordinance either, so I think we can kind of cut that particular discussion short, I agree, but if you have any like broad ideas, like a separate council, this would be a good time to talk about them, so we could take those back while we're talking to the other attorneys, while they're debating whether or not to advise their municipalities to participate.
Well, I got exactly out of my discussion that I wanted to get out because our staff and our attorneys have been kind of like, just exactly where do you guys want to go? And I think it's pretty apparent.
Yep.
So, but Mr. Burns now is bringing up a whole nother issue, is what do we vision the development of how this taxing district issue goes forward with, like you said, sub panels and stuff like that? Kevin had his hand up here, let him weigh in, and then we can chat.
Sure, I mean, dito everything it was said, but procedurally wise, when we had that first Chapter 164 meeting on some of the things the mayor's discussing, do you have an idea of how it does work that day where it's an actual negotiation table?
Yep.
Is it going to be, decisions have to be made at the table type of thing, where you leave the room, you have mitigation, like an all-day type of thing, or will there be an opportunity that discussions are made, then we have another city council meeting or a special meeting, and do you know how that process works?
The first meeting serves to focus and filter everything for the second meeting, and so it's going to be a very long meeting where there's going to be a lot of discussion, trying to narrow down the issues, it could be an all-day meeting. So that second actual big public meeting is very productive at that point.
Thank you, so we got some time.
So the very, the very statements that Mr. Bagby and Mr. Destin made, that's the opportunity for them to do that again in that setting. That would be, that's appropriate, right?
But there's going to be five or six other municipalities and the counties, so there's going to be a lot of other voices in the room too.
Sure, sure, sure.
More you'll talk about ahead of time.
Right, right, but I mean, as we go into that workshop setting, all of us have that opportunity to share our personal thoughts of where this is leading.
Of course, you definitely will.
As so nicely articulated by Mr. Bagby, we want them to follow the law. Short of that, then I suppose we're going to oppose what they're doing. But, you know, I don't see retreating on that. The law is pretty clear, all the other counties have done it in a lawful manner, and we want them to do the same, and I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation.
And I think that's why they have brought that ordinance back to us at the TDC twice. Okay, well, we made these changes, you know, but they're not all in accordance with the law, they're not in accordance of what we need to have as one of the largest contributors to the tax.
So your suggestion, apart from what we talked about earlier, is to, how to further in the future, the application of the taxing districts themselves?
The form of it, you know, not the, I agree, Mr. Bagby, you're going to have to have two separate districts at different rates, at least initially, maybe years down the line, you could have a referendum to maybe try to merge the two districts once they're the same tax rate. But if you want to maybe, as a negotiating point with the other cities, to maybe get them on board with Destin, maybe just be thinking of ideas, what would they want? You know, be thinking more, it's not just the city of Destin versus the county, there's also all the other municipalities are going to be there too, and they might want something too, and if Destin can maybe show them anything, that might be a good idea.
Mr. Bagby.
Yeah, there's nothing that precludes having advisory boards to the TDC, which is an advisory council... an advisory council to the BCC. So if the, I'll call it the Southern Taxing District Advisory Board, if they all want a seat, you can set it up like that. And I would have no problem with that because I do want to bring them on because I just, I, I hope we don't have to fight the county, I really don't. But I'm not feeling encouraged by what I see from them produce. So I would say, you know, we have a TDC rep and we have plenty of council. Y'all could probably come up with a bunch of great ideas that builds a consensus or builds a team with the current taxing district that makes it strong and strengthens our position. But that's an advisory board. The TDC is where I'm focused on and, and the largest taxing area within the taxing district should have a seat on that board.
Well, I think that this discussion was exactly what I was hoping would take place. It really was. It was a truly efficient expedition because now I think our legal team has a much clearer picture of where we're going to go. And our staff does too, because they've also been in negotiation with the, the, the other, you know, county representatives. So I, I think it was very fruitful and this gives us, I guess, something really to talk about when, when we put it on the agenda for our next meeting prior to our, our workshop that we're going to hold. Go ahead, Jeff.
One question of both council members, Schmidt and Ramswell, are y'all two still available at any time, just in case it's not set on the 18th and not all the other council members can make it? Okay, thank you.
All right. That's all I had. Kim?
I do have a request from Councilmember Brayden. He wanted me to advise the city council that he is absent tonight for personal reasons and he wanted you all to, he wanted to request that you excuse his absence under the charter. Three unexcused absences results in a vacancy. And so he wanted to ensure that tonight was excused.
Does that require a vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think we need to have a motion and a vote on that.
I make a motion.
Okay, so the motion is to make this an excused absence. And we have a second. All in favor? The vote is unanimous, so moved. Well, we'll be looking forward when Mr. Brayden can come back and, and sit upon the dais. Just letting them know.
Thank you, I will pass it on. And then the only other item I had was I had emailed you all a, an ordinance that would adopt a property rights element into our comprehensive plan. It's required by new legislation that just came into effect. Basically, the statute provides for some specific language that we can just adopt into our com plan or we can go beyond what is in the statute. I understand that they did not make it into your agenda packet, so if you want, we can just push this to the next meeting. But I just wanted to let you know that it will come at the next meeting. And the reason we're talking about it is because it's required by statute.
I'd open up for public comment to anyone that wants to go, come up to the dais, up to the podium, speak. Seeing none, meeting adjourned.